I'd like to open the planning board meeting. I'm new to date. My name's Rachel McManus and I have the haunting fact of trying to fill the shoes of the prior chair of the planning board, John Weiss, who resigned last month and moved out of state. We also have with us two new members of the board. We have Kristen Grub, who comes to us with a boatload of environmental background, and she's also helped us out on several town committees, including the master plan. We have Larry Murphy, who comes with much municipal and legal expertise, and we're grateful that they have stepped up. We also have our veteran members. We have the esteemed George Borse on my left and the esteemed Mr. Peter Pecos on my right, and town planner Martha Taylor, who tries to keep us on this right now. She's got the tough job. So, we're going to carry on here in a few minutes. I'm going to read into the record the financial report for November, planning board for November 18th. We have payroll warrant for town planner and planning administrator persistent for pay period 1910 dated 11/10/2018, and payroll for period ending 11/24/2018. We have an expense invoice for Verizon Wireless, planning I-5 monthly charge for 11/5/2018 and 11/20/2018. We also have a nestor account for peer review, Joseph Sawatka, 170 Orchard Street application reviewed, and that's dated 11/29/2018. So that's the funds we've got. So, now we get to wait a couple of minutes so we don't start early. We can jump to...
I could do a couple things from the town planners report if you'd like.
Oh, that would help. Take those off.
Yeah. A couple things. We've got, we have had an inquiry for possible location of a Georgetown marijuana establishment, both medical and adult use, on Route 1. We're in the process of taking a look at it, but one thing remaining to review is our zoning So, that might get added to our list. I'm going through the, so some of the best we can get right now, just kind of verifying what the setbacks are for sensitive receptors like educational and daycare, as well as the residences.
So, it's about the areas?
It's about the areas. There's also, I have a legal opinion which I will send to you from town council regarding a development in Georgetown off of Larkin Road. We've been requested to permit a curb cut there because the access is from Larkin Road in Newbury, not in Parish Road in Georgetown. I had a brief conversation with the Georgetown planner about that today, so I'll follow up on that as well. Council says that they do not need to submit a subdivision application, but they may still want to lay in on it with access from our road. I think that's pretty much it.
Do you want to go over to new business while we waste some time and talk about Jim Robinson, his resignation?
No, we only, let's see, I think it's just about 7:05, so I think we can start.
Oh, okay. 7:15.
Yeah, it's like, we did this one early.
Yes, so I guess first we should open the public hearing for the open space residential development on 170 Orchard Street.
Town of Newbury Planning Board Public Hearing Notice. Residents of the town of Newbury and other interested persons, please note that on Wednesday, December 5th, 2018, at 7:05 PM in the second floor hearing room at the Newbury Municipal Offices, 12 Kentway, Byfield, Mass. 0192, the Newbury Planning Board will hold a public hearing to consider an application submitted by Charing Cross Realty Trust for an open space residential development, OSRD special permit, for proposed forward village development at 170 Orchard Street, Byfield, Mass., assessors map R20 lot 43A. The applicant requests approval of a proposed plan to build 15 single family homes on the property, as shown on the concept plan entitled conceptual development plan, open space residential development location in Newbury, Mass., 170 Orchard Street, dated October 31st, 2017, prepared by Eastern Land Surveying Associates, Inc., and as described in the OSRD special permit application and supporting documents. The application is on file for review during regular business hours with the town department and in the planning office, Suite 101, 12 Kentway, Byfield, Mass. For more information, contact the planning board office at (978) 465-0862, extension 312. All persons interested or wishing to be heard relative to the proposed OSRD special permit application should appear at the time and place designated above. Rachel McManus, Chair of Newbury Planning Board.
And we've got the tear sheets. So, we've got the green card receipts and the tear sheets from the damage unit. It looks like there were three people who didn't get their certified orders.
And actually, there are a few other green cards that we didn't get back. On Monday, we mailed by regular mail notices to everyone who had it, return a green card by Monday. So, we did everything we could to know if I knew.
Okay, so, guys who probably all know the way that it kind of works, is the applicant will make a presentation for the proposed project. At the conclusion of that, you'll open it to the board for any questions or comments that they may have on it, and after that, it'll be open to the public for any questions that may happen. With that said, you may depart.
Good evening. Thank you. My name's Jeff Roloff, so I'm the attorney for the applicant here. Bill Luster, second row, is one of the principals of the applicant, and Kim Turner's with us tonight. Kim is our landscape architect with Katie Turner with offices in Newbury, Maine. So, I've got a PowerPoint that I'll walk through here. It's got a lot of images that I'm going to go through very quickly. I included them, though, so that we could go back to them if there are questions or comments related to them, but don't be scared by the number of slides that I have here. So, I'm going to quickly just introduce the developer. I'll identify the property and some property features, go through the application materials so that the public knows what's been submitted for the project, a quick discussion of the open space residential development, or OSRD, design process and project overview, and then we'll get into the project details, and I'll turn it over to Kim at that point. Our civil engineer unfortunately is out with pneumonia, so he wasn't able to make it tonight, so we're not going to get into some of the engineering details that we hoped to do, but we also have gotten a number of engineering-related peer review comments from the board's peer review consultants, so we had always anticipated continuing this hearing through another night. That'll give us time to respond to those comments, and we'll continue our discussion at a continued hearing. Charing Cross Realty, as I mentioned, Bill Luster is one of the principals there. Been a developer since 1970, you know, decades of experience with specializing in condominium developments, neighborhood-type developments, with projects through the North Shore, Massachusetts, Connecticut, and Maryland. We did submit a sort of resume of source with the application package, if anyone's interested in looking at that. The property is a 20.57 acre parcel of land primarily used for agriculture, just west of the Pearson Drive neighborhood, northwest of Parker River Reservoir and Great Meadow. It's in the agricultural residential zoning district. The wetlands boundaries have been confirmed through a resource delineation process before the Conservation Commission. They issued an order of resource area delineation in 2017, so those boundaries, as depicted in these plans, have been confirmed by the Conservation Commission. So, this identifies the general vicinity of the property. These are the tax parcels. You can see the 170 Orchard is this long parcel that extends to the rear of the Pearson Drive neighborhood. That's a depiction of the proposed development overlaid on an aerial photograph, and this is an aerial photograph, so you can see, if you look at the area to be developed, it's primarily now open fields with some wooded areas to the very rear of the parcel. The application that we submitted, if anyone else is, I know the board's aware of this, but we did submit an application. It included plans depicting the details of the project that was proposed in itself. We're going to go through those quickly tonight. We also included existing conditions maps, landscape materials that Kim prepared, architectural designs, a stormwater report demonstrating compliance with the applicable stormwater standards, a soil exploration plan, and also a definitive subdivision plan. Let me just point out on that, so the process here, as it's provided for in the Newbury zoning by law, really has two phases. So, right now, we're in the first phase, which is a special permit process for an OSRD concept plan, basically. So, that process, if we secure that special permit, will then go to a process related to the definitive subdivision plan itself, and it's typically in that process where the engineering details are really, we really drill down into those details, and just as you would for any subdivision plan. So, it's really a two-step process. Right now, we're in step one, which is the special permit associated with the OSRD concept plan. So, we submitted the definitive plan, really as background, it's just to provide the details. I know the peer review consultant focused primarily on those plans. We're happy to address those comments. Generally speaking, though, most of those really nitty-gritty type details, I think, can be worked out later, although there are comments provided by the peer review consultant that really should be addressed upfront, and we're going to do that. The design process itself is provided for in the zoning by law, as well as the planning board's OSRD regulations. The objective of an OSRD development is related to a conventional subdivision, is to try to consolidate the developed, or developed area of the property, basically allowing for the same number of houses or units that you would allow or be able to get through a conventional subdivision process, but then squeezing those, squeezing the units into a smaller area of the site so you can better protect open space and other resource areas of the property, which is what we're proposing to do here. There are provisions for, in order to provide incentive for people to proceed with these kind of projects. There are reductions in the dimensional requirements that typically would apply to a conventional plan. There are also some minor density bonus adjustments if you provide things like a certain amount of open space, or affordable housing, or preservation of historic resources. The design process really starts with identifying upfront the conservation areas and those areas of the property that have the greatest environmental value, which we've done here, which is why we went through the Conservation Commission process first, and then to locate the houses in the areas of the lot that make the most sense in terms of protecting those Part of the process involves identifying what you could construct if you were to just go the usual, you know, the conventional subdivision route. So, we did submit a preliminary plan, or a concept conventional subdivision plan, also referred to as the yield plan, and through that plan, you can see that if we were to proceed with a conventional plan, what we'd be proposing to do is to get a road off of Orchard Street, run it deep into the property. We've got an option agreement with the property owner over here, so that under this conventional approach, we would extend a roadway connecting Pearson Drive to Orchard Street, and then creating the lots off of Pearson Drive. This is not what we're proposing to do. Charing Cross is really looking to do something much better than this, but that's the yield plan. Under this plan, we're showing that we can get 14 lots if we were to proceed with the conventional approach. Under the proposed open space plan, we're proposing 15 lots, and we're taking advantage of a one-lot bonus based upon the amount of open space that we're preserving here. As I calculated, I think we actually would have the benefit of a two-lot density bonus, given the amount of open space we're protecting, but we're proposing to just take advantage of one of those. The lots would, all of them would achieve the minimum 50-foot frontage required by the OSRD provisions, and they'd be a minimum of 5,000 square feet in area. Instead of a through road, we're proposing a cul-de-sac. We're proposing to protect 15 acres of open space, which is about 73% of the site, all of that primarily to the rear, but also an area between the house lots and the Pearson Drive residences. We're proposing a shared onsite septic system, which is located behind the first and second lots. That would be a system that would collect the waste from all of the residences, rather than each house having its own septic system, and we're proposing to connect to water that's located within Orchard Street. So, this is a sort of base plan for the proposed development, and you can see from this that most of the development is up near Orchard Street, and all this area to the rear would be maintained as open space, and our proposal is to have it maintained by a homeowners association so the maintenance obligations aren't on the town. There are a lot of different ways to sort of set those things up, and we're open to discussing all of those options. So, with that, a quick overview, I think what I'll do is turn it over to Kim Turner to go through the design process that she went through.
Good evening. My name is Kim Turner. I am the landscape architect for the project, and so the overall intent for this landscape, for this OSRD, was to react to the natural and the historic features of the site and try to enhance those features through the thoughtful layout of the roadways and the homes and the trail systems that you'll see. The first step in doing that was to do a comprehensive site analysis for the entire property, and I can run down a few sort of key features here. Number one, we have two residential properties on Orchard Street that are on either side of the entrance road that enter into our property, so we wanted to provide some buffer to those two existing homes. Number two, there's the residential development on Pearson, which is at the top of the screen here, so we wanted to provide a decent amount of buffer screening to those properties as well, to reduce the impact. And then there's wetland resources and woodland resources, and those you can see in this sort of celadon green here. There's a wetland here and here as well, but this is primarily an open sort of field, agricultural field, and the woodlands are towards the rear, and because of that, it really made the most sense to settle this development up closer to Orchard Street and settle the homes and the roadways up to the southeastern portion of the property in order to preserve the resource areas. Another thing I want to call out, there's two specimen chestnut trees on the property. The first one is located right here, and we wanted to preserve these and incorporate them into the overall design scheme, and I'll show you the second one on the next screen. So, this is the front portion of the property. This is the rear portion, and here's that second specimen chestnut tree here, and as you can see, all of this area here is woodland resource with another wetland running through here, so again, made the most sense to settle the development up towards Orchard Street in order to preserve all of that rear area. This next image I like to show because it really shows the proposed development in context of the neighborhood. This is the Pearson Ave development here, and as you can see, what we're proposing is much smaller than that in comparison, and this is the Coarser Brook Drive development here. So, really, in terms of size, it's very comparable to the Coarser Brook Drive rather than the Pearson in terms of the extent of it. And you can also see how much space is being preserved. Again, it's 73% of the site for open space. This is the overall sketch plan layout of the proposed development, and number one, what we didn't want to provide here was sort of a stick straight road with a lollipop on the top of it, so we sort of meandered the road, it kind of has a little bit of undulation to it, and it's a tree-lined street. The homes are settled closer to the roads. They're a little bit more friendly towards the roadway to give a stronger sense of community And, yeah, I think I'll just scroll up. So, this is an enlargement of just the front portion. So, the entrance way here, what we're proposing, and I have some images to show to better explain what we're proposing here, is a cobble apron right at the street with two sort of hitching posts, granite posts on either side, to provide sort of an entrance way into the development, and then a stone wall on either side as well, again, kind of harkening back to that New England character a bit. As you can see here, again, the houses are settled up closer to the street. The driveways are not as long to really give a friendly face towards the neighborhood. We're proposing a sidewalk along one side of this undulated, tree-lined road, and then down towards the cul-de-sac. There's another stone wall, so the stone walls are here and here. There's another stone wall here as well, mostly that's to kind of protect and designate the area that becomes the wetland down here. I'm also proposing a pollinator meadow here as well, and the reason for that is to kind of reduce the amount of manicured lawn within the development area so that it becomes another resource area, a different type of ecosystem for the proposed development. At the very tail end of this cul-de-sac is a proposed victory garden or community garden for the neighborhood itself, and that is the beginning of the trail system, which is at the back end here. So, here's the victory garden with a central kind of gathering space for the neighborhood. So, the trail system enters through that, through an open meadow, which is where it is existing today, but the thought is that we would bring some, an orchard in there, not necessarily edible fruiting trees, but it could, they could be ornamental trees. Again, just to give, break up the space a bit and give a nice choreography through the trail system, so you'd have really a reaction towards the different kind of ecological types of landscape, from meadow through a kind of more formal area, but then towards the rear to experience both the wetland resources and the woodland resources, and the little footbridge over the stream at the end there. And then that chestnut tree shows up here, so it's incorporated into, into the design as well. One other thing I should note going back is you can see these trees along the edges are really trying to provide more buffer to the neighboring homes here, here, along this edge, pocketed in here, and then they kind of break down a bit towards the back because there's not as much impact. So, speaking of the character images, so the entrance way, I had mentioned a cobblestone apron right off of Orchard Street would look something like that, hitching posts on either side, very subtle, but just sort of harkening back to that New England character. The field stone walls would be your classic New England dry-laid look, field stone walls. Pollinator meadow would be just a unkept sort of wildflower meadow for bees and birds and that sort of a thing. And then the victory garden would be something that would become sort of a central gathering space and a way to engage this community, and then again, bring you through to the trail system. I believe that's all we have for the sketch plan. Did you want to speak a little bit about the engineering, or?
Let me jump in.
Yeah, that's fine.
You bring up the data with Chris. No, I apologize. Bill Luster, Charing Cross, you know, Mr. Mel Alvin's pneumonia, I found out earlier today. We couldn't get touch of his partner as far as we get here, so we're going to have to toll that discussion, but I just wanted to first thank you, Martha, for giving us so quickly the peer review comments. There were 44 comments, 16 of which we just looked at and said, "Yeah, of course," 16 of which we're reviewing now, and 12 of which we need to discuss with Mr. Sawatka. So, we're actively going through that list now. I hope that we, too slow down by Rick's stand, but by your next meeting, if we're able to fit into your next agenda, I'm sure we could give a pretty detailed description of our response to the, to the peer review on all those 44 items, and hopefully have incorporated the ones that are simple into the plans, so that we know that we can get them to you pretty quickly after that. And I just wanted to bring out, as Kim and Jeff were talking about the OSRD plan, this is a real sweet spot for us. We finished, recently finished in Swanscott, Massachusetts, 14 small homes, you know, small, I shouldn't say small, 2,400 square foot homes on 4,000 to 6,000 square foot fee simple lots, not condominiums, and we're doing the same thing in Acton with 12 homes that were just about finished. Swanscott's been completed for about a year and a half, and we're beginning the same thing in Bridgewater. So, we love smallish homes, 2,400, 2,500, 2,200, some of them under 2,000 square feet homes on small lots. And when I say a small lot, I mean, obviously, typically no smaller than 5,000 square feet, but no larger than 7,000. We find that's a, that's a good market, and the OSRD plan seemed like a natural for us. So, we've been doing this for a few years, and we look forward to having a discussion with you about it here, and we'll get you our engineering report as quickly as possible.
I'll show you just quickly a couple of the sort of representative architectural designs. These were submitted with the application, but these are sort of typical designs that would be, you know, of the sort that would be built in this development. And then we also provided a couple streetscapes. These are from other neighborhoods built.
Jeff, that's Swanscott.
That's the Swanscott one?
And the next one you'll show is what's proposed and what's been approved in Bridgewater, and it's just starting. So, those are mostly garage unders, and Swanscott's garage next to her on the first one.
And then in terms of the engineering details, I think I'll just defer that, and we're happy. Kim's actually pretty familiar with a lot of them, and maybe we can answer some questions if they come up tonight, but otherwise, we'll defer that discussion to the next morning. We are requesting some waivers. I think this will be part of the engineering discussion, really, but just so you're aware of it, there are some minor waiver requests being made with respect to the roadway design. We'll hit those in connection with the engineering review, and then there's a requirement in the OSRD regs to submit all the legal documents as part of the application. We're just asking that we be allowed to prepare all those documents later. It can be imposed as a condition in the special permit, but we've got a lot of process ahead of us. We're just hoping to get traction on that before we spend the effort to prepare all the legal documents associated with the homeowners association, et cetera. So, I think that is it. I'll leave it there. We do have other materials, but those were included here only in the event that they were responsive to questions. So, that's the end of our presentation.
Okay. Thank you. I do have one thing that I sort of mentioned earlier, and that is because this is a special permit hearing, the associate member, Kristen, will be a voting member of the board because we need super majority. But now, I guess we'll open it up to the board for any questions, but, yeah, comments?
Yeah, I have a couple of questions. On the owner letter authorization that was signed by Diane Yurkovich, if I didn't spell the name, was pronounced correctly, that's okay, please. I was signed by her as co-executor. Now, whether as a co-executor, you should have a line, and why didn't that other one sign it, or is there some other reason?
Our understanding was that either one of them could have signed it. I don't think there's any issue on that. I can't say that I did the legal research on it. Do you have some reason to think that they both did sign it?
Well, that's what I was asking, if it's an estate and it says there are two executives under the will, then both have to sign because one can delegate to another to do that signing.
Okay. I'll look into that.
Please.
Do I understand that you're proposing a condominium form of ownership?
No, fee simple homes.
Okay. Does that, and, but with a shared subject system?
Yes. There'll be a homeowners association.
Okay. Does that raise any issues with Title V, whether in separate ownership?
We've, well, we've done it, we've done it in a condominium in Waddam, and we've done it in a single-family home development in Acton, and we're doing it now, and it's been, it's been, it's worked in both, in both areas, so, we haven't seen it yet, finally yet.
And would you anticipate that you're going to propose that the roadway be a public way taken over by the town?
Yes. We're going to design it to at least set We're gonna design it to at least set it up for that, but that's our desire.
Okay. And access to, to the trails and all of that would be open to the public and the general public?
Yes.
And what about parking for those, for members of the public? Have you applied to that?
I don't think we've shown any parking in the plan we've submitted, but we would be happy to look at it and see if there's a place that it would be appropriate.
And have you just confined your per testing to the area of the, the shared system or have you per throughout the site?
We've gone all the way to the back of the site, kind of, for lack of a better term, down the middle of the site and found the best material. We found it suitable, but the best material where we, where we ultimately cited the subject system, the shared subject system.
And you don't have, is there any concern that, as to the, you know, the, on the yield plan, the buildability of any of those lots out there?
No, we, we found suitable material. We just felt that it was better upfront and shared. Suitable soils, I should say.
My understanding is this property is enrolled in Chapter 61A. Could you just speak to that and how that plays into this discussion?
Uh, yeah.
Do you want, yeah, that is an issue that came up relatively recently for us. The real estate lawyers involved with the DI wasn't part of that. It didn't, didn't flag that as an issue. That's obviously gonna be something we're gonna need to get our hands around, and we'll be talking to the town about that. If this property's in 61A, then there's a process to go through that involves tax, you know, rollback tax payments, options to the town to purchase the property, et cetera. So, Mark did highlight that issue a few weeks ago, and we will be discussing that with the town and working our way through that.
One of the things that will come up front is the length of the legs, what, 920 feet?
Yes.
And the usual length, last night in town, is 500. But I think we have to think about that and how that's gonna work. You need some good explanation of why you need it. I think it's obvious, but just a question of this beyond the length issue.
Yep.
Going back to Larry's comment about parking, the trail is, I assume, a public development. Is that correct?
That is correct.
Okay. So there has to be some parking for the public. Doesn't mean tennis spaces, but someplace just people can park and use a trail.
You're also looking for a waiver on the, on the width of the road, is that correct?
Yeah, only with respect to that portion of the road from Orchard Street to the first lot. And it's shy, I think, three feet.
Yes.
So it's a pretty minor waiver. Just that's, that's just, that's, it's the width that they, they made the property when they created the lot. Once we get, I think once we get past that, or was that just on the yield plan? It might be that we maintain that narrower strip. Did we widen it?
Yeah, right at the end of that.
Yeah.
It's 202 feet.
So that, that relates to the right-of-way width, not the pavement width. So we think, you have a pavement width, we, the requirements, the right-of-way width will be a little bit shorter than what is.
Anticipated my next question because one of the concerns is if it should become a public way, whether or not it's wide enough for the town to maintain it.
Mm-hmm.
And that's at least an issue that's been raised.
Yep. Yep. We need it in, but, you know, we understand it is in our list of waivers.
We're gonna go up to the standard and, and hope for the best.
What's the width of the road, actual width of the road?
I forget that number.
I didn't see that anywhere.
It's not shown. That's not shown? We'll defer that one.
Okay.
I think it's on.
Parking lots are.
Maybe not.
And then I, I have a thought, my thoughts are, I just have some questions on, what are, I won't call them discrepancy, but seem to be some conflicts in the way that the wetlands are depicted on different plans. And I don't know if that's something you want to defer until your engineer is here. And I also have some questions on a couple of the lots in terms of whether they be buildable, given the wetland delineation and the way they're, so, not on the proposed, but on the yield plan.
I think we, if it's, if it's okay, I would like to defer that, and also we could bring William Manuel, who did the wetlands delineation with the conservation commission as well. They know they were very comfortable with the delineation when they approved it, and we're happy to walk, bring William to walk through that with you.
So it does appear, though, as, since this is our first meeting, that there's a lot of materials still to be processed and to digest, especially by peer review.
Sure.
And a lot of questions that are on the table that we need to be, well, explored. I'm just gonna, the room is full, so there's gonna be a lot of people with questions. So I'm just gonna throw this out, the buffering question. So explain to me what you're gonna have for a nice buffer between the existing properties and what would be.
So it's primarily larger evergreen trees that are underplanted. So where the dark circles are being shown, sorry, I should stand over here. Those are larger evergreen trees, like your screws for pine sort of mix. And then the lighter colored are canopy trees, so maples, oaks, those sorts of things. And then there's underplanting beneath the trees with what I envision being a native large shrub buffer, like viburnums and rhododendrons and those sorts of things. So typically, the way that I approach these is I do a lot of native kind of more naturalistic plantings along the edge, and then as you get closer to the foundations, they can become a little bit more formalized.
And where do you think that distance would operate?
Um, it's, it's pretty generous. I mean, there's an, this is existing tree line here, so there's already a pretty good buffer along the edge to the, especially to the Pearson Drive development. I wanna say that, off the top of my head, it goes roughly between 50 and 100 feet. And then the, the new plantings would be at the edge of that, so you're sort of stepping down the canopy line to, you know, a mix of taller trees and then shorter shrubs on in front of that.
So somewhere between 1500 feet of buffering.
I'm not quite understanding that. Are you talking about from there, I mean, it looks like lots eight and nine are the closest to the property, the end of the property?
Here, these two?
Yeah. And I don't think there's 50 feet between.
You don't?
Those and the, is there? I'm just looking at, at the scale. I mean, for example, lot eight is 50 feet wide, and it doesn't look to me, anyway.
This distance here, you're saying is 50 feet?
Yeah.
Yeah. So I'm, I'm talking about sort of from there to there, the existing tree line.
Yeah, but you think you got 100 feet there?
Not 100 feet, no.
No.
50.
50.
Yeah.
We'll scale it up.
Yeah, we can scale it up.
We'll scale it up.
Got them here if you wanna do it now, otherwise we could do it.
Yeah, be a good idea.
It's, it's closer to 30 in that specific area, and it's wider, is it, as you get to these lots down here. It's a 40 scale line.
Great, Rachel. I, I have some questions relative to the conventional yield plan, too. Is that, should I hold those as well?
Yeah, I think it sounded like we'd prefer to defer those until we get the engineer and the wetland folks here.
Although it might, I mean, it might be worth knowing what they are, just so that we're prepared to respond to those. I don't know, it's up to you, but it would be helpful to hear, if there are specific questions that you have that we can take back and review with Chris, and then we'll be ready to respond to those. That's okay?
It's up to you.
She wanted to go.
Well, because I'm new to the board, I'm still new to reviewing all the bylaws and becoming more familiar with them, but I just, in terms of the conventional yield plan determining the number of lots, I was curious about the, whether the property owner, what's the nature of the agreement with the lot shown to be purchased to put the road through? To, that says Pearson Drive for one, and two, there do appear to be significant wetlands in that back portion, as you've described. That's the reason.
Can we flip the yield plan up?
Yes. With respect to the through road, there's an option agreement that the developer has executed with one of the property owners on Pearson Drive, and I included a copy of that in the application package, actually. So you have a copy of that, that option.
Has that been signed and dated?
Yeah, I think that the one you had is signed and dated.
I think it was.
Right. So that's right here. You know, again, it's an option agreement, so this is not, this is not a development that Sharon Cross wants to develop, but it's, obviously, we needed to show that if that was what we were left with, that could be developed. So that, you know, so they've executed an option agreement to get through there if it was needed. With respect to the wetlands, yeah, there would be some challenges, I think, permitting the house lots and the roadway and the buffer zone, but, you know, so every town, in terms of the yield plan requirements, is a little bit different on these OSRD developments. Some towns require you to go through a lot of sort of permitting related to the yield plan, a project that you aren't actually proposing to build. And other towns, you know, are more sort of relaxed in terms of what they require. Newbury, the way the bylaw reads and the regulations read, are fairly relaxed in terms of what you need to demonstrate, and that just makes practical sense because no one is proposing this development, so it would be, it would be, you know, it would take a lot to go to the Concom and prove to them or demonstrate to them that we could actually get the approvals we would need to put everything in where, exactly where it's shown. And you could, you know, you can make the same arguments with respect to a lot of the things, but the way that the bylaw reads here, the idea is to show what you could put out there in terms of a preliminary lot layout, and the requirements as related to the yield plan are not very onerous. That said, you know, if there's no way you can put 14 lots out here in a conventional plan, then the yield plan shouldn't show 14 lots. We think that we could. Doesn't mean it would be an easy permitting process, but we think that we could. Keep in mind also, though, if I'm right on the calculations, I think I am, so we've got the opportunity for a two-lot bonus here, given the 73% open space area that we're proposing to maintain.
Does that include the wetlands?
That?
I believe it does.
Oh, that, right. So that, so you're saying if you carved that out, that might be right. You might be right. So maybe there's only one lot.
So it is supposed to be contiguous up.
Yeah, I think you're right. Okay.
So just to put it into perspective, though, without the option on that lot, the Pearson Drive lot, you'd basically, as a matter of right, be, be confined to a 500-foot cul-de-sac with the conventional.
Correct. Yep.
Lot sizes, right?
That's right.
Okay, one thing that kind of was pointed out to me was that we have the wetlands delineated on the yield plan, as we do here, which are very difficult to see, especially all in black and white.
Yeah.
I colored mine.
Okay.
And, but when you go to the more detailed definitive plans, the, the wetland area for this area goes all the way across to the lot line, to the stone wall, and it's not shown that way on this plan. And if, in fact, those wetlands go all the way across both lots, then it's a little bit difficult to figure out how they could possibly be built upon.
Well, if you're right, I think it's a fair comment. Let me, let me just look into that discrepancy.
Yeah, no, that's fine.
It sounded like a discrepancy. Yeah, no problem. No, no, why don't you point that out? Yep.
And there, there's gonna be similar questions to some of the other lots as well. You know, the other, the other large wetland area around lot 12, a little dodgy as well, or a little questionable, I probably should say.
Yeah, Bill?
Yes.
If you plan to have an HOA, do you have a sample form of document?
I do.
Might be using that.
I do. I have one that we generally use, and then we tailor it to each development, depending on whether there are trails or shared subject. I can get that.
If you can get that to Martha, that'd be great.
We'll do that.
Sure.
Okay, we can open it up to the public. We ask that you be recognized by the chair, and then that you come up to the front of the room and identify yourself and your address, please. So, anybody who wants to come up and talk, ask questions?
They won't jump at once. Good evening, board. Good evening, people. I am Jerry Strazula. I live at 170 Orchard Street. On this map right here, I'm right here. And this very first lot right behind me is gonna be built in a swamp. I suggest the board take a walk down there, do a walkthrough. It's not only wetlands. I just put a garage up a year and a half ago, and I had to resituate it because when the excavator started digging, it was a geyser. That's wetland back there, and it travels all the way out to that specimen chestnut street, uh, tree over there. If you want, take a walkthrough and see what's going on back there. Secondly, this driveway going in over here, there's a mad curve in the road right here. It doesn't look that bad, but I've already had a car come down, wipe out my stone wall, and damn near kill themselves. That was one car. I've only been there two and a half years. They're building another house over here, and that's probably gonna be a year-long process, so that with everything else that's going on over there, it's gonna destroy our property value for one. We have a serene area over the other, there's a drive that goes out back, and it's a cornfield that's harvested once a year and planted in the springtime. We're really concerned that our property value's basically gonna diminish, and if this is gonna be a public way back here, I don't want cars pulling into my driveway. I don't wanna see headlights at 10 o'clock at night in my bedroom. We don't have it now. That's not what I want. You know, it's a nice development by all means. I've seen your projects. I've seen the one in Swampscott. I've seen the one in Acton. Nice houses, they just don't fit in there. It's not what by feels about. That's all I got to say. Thank you.
Thank you.
Ian Quill from Great Meadow Road. I just wanna pick up on something Jerry just said. The Orchard Street does have a curve there, and I already dread pulling out of my street because of the way the street, Orchard Street drops down. There isn't much time to see somebody coming, and when you come along Orchard Street there, I'm concerned that the cars coming out, that there be some, some way, some visibility for people on the street and coming out of that new development. I'm also concerned about the swale along that road, where I know if you take your mind off the road for a second, and you go into that swale, you're gonna wind up upside down. So I think there are some concerns about Orchard Street and how it can handle the development.
Cheyenne Howard, 61 Central Street. Can somebody reflect on what town bylaws as reference to visibility would this would be cut onto Orchard Street? You've got two residential houses really tight there. One of the, there must be ordinances in reference to the line of sight coming out of that road. Can somebody address that?
I think, well, there are a couple things. One is ordinarily, we require a 30-foot radius on the property line. They've requested a waiver for that, largely because the, the 50 feet of frontage is actually already smaller than our right-of-way requirement right now. The other thing is, and there are standards, and that would probably be something that could be addressed by a traffic study in terms of sight lines, sight distances, that kind of thing, given the posted speed limit on Orchard Street, and I don't believe that any traffic analysis has been done.
Now, we can get somebody out there. Bill was just saying, can we get a traffic consultant out there to review the sightline so that we can come back and answer that question? lines, so that we can come back and answer that question.
Whereas that property, the properties are controlled by two homeowners, so if he wants to plant lilacs at the front of his property at any given time, your line of sight would be eliminated.
Right, so what you know, what the traffic consultant normally does is will check the sight lines from a certain distance back into the access drive, and then they'll have to determine whether or not the sight lines that are required to meet the standards cut over any private property. If they do, then that issue you're identifying is an issue we're going to need to work through. If the sight lines can be maintained by maintaining the, just whatever is in the public right, right-of-way area, it's not an issue. So we'll look into that, and we'll let you know what the consultant says.
Thank you.
Hey, good evening. Scott Lance at 170 Orchard Street.
Hello, request.
170 Orchard Street. On the property here, on this map, our house literally sits right here at the end. We just purchased the Bollner's house, and our property would sit right at the end of this street. When we purposely look for a house on this street, or for a house to buy, we wanted a house that had, you know, good, a nice street, and lived in Byfield for 18 years, we really love it, she was raised here.
15 years.
And we were really concerned about having lights shining in our windows all night long. 14 houses there with a road that enters right towards us, those lights would be heading right at our bedroom window every single night, coming and going, way crazy. Certainly, all the traffic, that is a busy street, it's got a bad corner right there, just getting in and out of our driveway is difficult enough. Then you have 14 houses there, coming and going, it's going to be crazy. We wanted a nice, quiet street, a nice, quiet house, we really liked the neighborhood, and this is definitely not what we wanted here, just after we purchased ours.
Am I concerned?
It's a nice development, don't get me wrong, just don't want it.
My concern is for everybody here who lives in this neighborhood, and for the wildlife that they could be driving out, that's a major concern of mine.
Yep.
You see a line roadkill, that's what's happening. People are building, they're driving wildlife out of that road, that's what's going to happen here.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Hi. Melissa Max, my house in Pima. We are one of two houses that are being directly affected by the entrance of this new development. My question is, right now, the line goes right through the middle of our driveway. How are they going to put that buffer in? I don't want to work at a wall, I have a rain joint in my driveway.
What's the location of it?
Just to the right of that tee where you are. Sit down to.
I don't even know. I think you're.
Right there.
Right here. Yeah, so, yeah, so our house, and then we have Jerry, who's our next-door neighbor, the thruway is going to go right through our two houses, so I just want to know how this is going to impact us, because we are being directly affected.
Your driveway's impacted?
Yep, yep, and all that crap going through, we're right on the corner. So it is, it is a major concern of ours.
Thank you.
Hi, my name's Tom Frank, I'm 21 Pearson Drive, sort of in the middle of the properties. Just had a question on like storm runoff, and it's a couple houses that, like that, do have, have a storm drain on my property. Runs the water, there's always water on the street when it rains and after, so it's a pretty wet area, so how stormwater is going to be affected by that, plus, you know, that's just a big concern, it would get worse. And then, just a couple other things, you know, 61A, you know, if the town would be interested in purchasing that property, I mean, that's before, that's going to be later on, but it could be better used by the town, just to make sure that's, you know, option. That's it.
Okay, thank you. Well, I think we definitely want to plant a sidewalk, so let's see if we can get that scheduled.
We should probably also leave the comments first or something.
Yeah. Should we do the comments first and then schedule the law?
Since we're commentary.
Since we're commentary. We do have some comments back on different town boards.
Okay, comments that we've received thus far. From the Highway Department, Wednesday, December 5th. I looked over the application of open space for residential development at 170 Orchard Street. I'm not sure if it's going to be private or town-owned road at completion. It's going to be a town's, we would need to make sure the road is paved wide enough for the plows and the room on the shoulders of the road, the stub anthill. Shows the right-of-way width at 50 feet, width, but not the width of the actual paving. We would also, we'd also want to make sure we have cul-de-sac log enough for a snow, for a flower as well. If it's going to be a town-owned, I would recommend no cobblestone apron, as it would be a future maintenance issues for the town. The other issue is we pay Orchard Street at the end of September, 2015, and September would be 2020, that the moratorium would be up for cutting the road. I'm not sure what side of the road, water mains on, so that would be an issue. If you have any questions, please let me know. Thanks, James Hore, Director of Facilities Town Newberry. This is going to be from the Board of Health. Good morning, the Plaine Board, Public Hearing. Any questions? Can I have comments back?
Actually, no, we haven't received anything. It's my original.
Okay, we have received that. How we have from the Fire Chief? Okay, historical commission, which is. The historical commission met on 11, 1518 for a regular meeting. The property is noted, discussed as part of a meeting. A vote of no comment, no opposition was agreed unanimously, the members of the historical commission appreciate the effort, the notification, and the board. From our Fire Chief, good afternoon, Martha. If that is what plan is showing, I'm fine with it all, I would just add that we will require at least two fire heightens, and would caution that the circle not have any stonework or walls would limit our turning radius around the circle if I can make any further assistance. I think those are all the comments to date.
Right, and, and what he was saying is, he had asked me what the, what the pavement was and the dimensions of the cul-de-sac, and I said, no waivers have been requested on those, so the assumption was right now that they were meeting our town requirements, and so that's why he's called it, that's the case, then he's fine with that. But we'll need to get confirmation.
Looking for that, yeah.
Anyone back at the sidewalk?
Yes, would you want to schedule this sidewalk? More on Saturday, so neighbors might be able to join us?
I think that would probably make sense.
Is that good? I have a question on the Saturday.
Except this Saturday is not good.
It's not good for me.
February 15th, is that what you're saying?
15th is good for me.
Yep.
Yep, that's all.
It's fine, it's fine for us.
I actually couldn't shut. I would be on the.
15th, so will we stay nine o'clock?
Can we pull into the site to park, on the site, or where should we park?
It's a little rough to pull into the site. I'd have to check, I haven't, I haven't been out to it since all the rain of, the rains of September, so why don't we get back to you on how to, how to deal with that, because I want to make sure that it's people working, it's stuck.
And we don't want to be blocking.
No, 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 or make a mess.
Shall we have a motion to continue?
I have.
We're requested.
Our next meeting is at 19. What are they would be prepared with?
Would you be ready by the 19th to come back here?
I suspect that we will, and I'll know early immediately, either midday tomorrow, that we, that we'll have our in here back, and we'll be okay, so if I could.
You'll have to set a target.
When's the meeting after that?
January 2nd.
Yeah, I think that's probably more likely, given.
Are people going to make January 2nd?
Yes.
I was checking.
Good questions.
It's a funny day.
Do we have anything else? Like that person? So we could probably do like a 7:10. I mean, there's no point making, waiting for 15 minutes if they don't do.
Right.
Carry on.
It's a 7:10 here.
I'm saying 7:10.
I would make a motion that we continue this public hearing to the 2nd of January, 7:20, 19, at 7:10.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you.
I can send you the whole thing if you want. Yeah, so you can take a picture of that, too. What do you like?
Nice to see you.
That's the reason I wonder if you know.
Yes, I do know. An fellow Blackwood shop, and.
Yeah, it's his grandfather.
We did, we did, I didn't know it was under the chestnut. I didn't know it was under there.
Rex wrote a picture.
Yes, yeah, and we wanted to tie it down a little bit.
You can get these images from the plane.
You just got a level of a home. Cornfield, you may go see that basement, that basement is such a great space. 4,000 square foot home somewhere, we get a lot of, they can put all their stuff in the basement, still have it, living 20,000, 2,000, 800 square meters, we might end up all here. I'm telling you that it's shocking how many folks, five and up, are in Swampscott. Fourteen houses. And the ones who did, who worked.
That's me.
When you think about Swampscott, $720,000 home, and folks that are 30, just starting families, they'd be walking in, and then I realized they were the on sweep of the person who was, was going to them. I fuck with their mom, and they were, they, they were horrible, and as we were building them all, one of them was a.
Are you all right? Don't feel like you're paralyzed or something.
Yeah, I'm not over this room.
Not over.
It was cold out there.
I left here at 1:30 and came back.
I'm actually just a couple doors down. We're at the common hill.
Pardon me.
Yes, 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 yes. There's a blue house first.
Of the buildings, because they had to.
The meeting, are you going to stay?
No, but they had, and we had to do the subject.
Or similar topics.
That was the one.
No, no.
Yes. That's why I can't, because it was 60 something around the Orchard Street.
Can't shut it off.
Yeah, we have to leave it partially open, it's bylaw, and don't kill Channing. No.
Anybody a technological wizard here?
We're trying to get it to sync with your machine?
Yes. It's up on the screen, but it's just.
It's not a piece of tape over it, like it's not being or anything, is it?
No.
That was good.
So we're getting it on the screen, it's not showing up over here.
There you go. You just click it and drag it over to the right.
Click it.
So, see right here, you can see, you look on the screen, you can see on the screen, and then you just click and drag it, so it's almost like an extension of the computer.
Okay. Now it's showing on the screen is here, and it's not.
Martha, why don't we just go along with the handles?
Is it showing up on the laptop?
It's showing up on the laptop, and it's not actually opening on this.
Good evening, my name is Ford Callen. Kevin is in there. I'm here with the executive of the Water Canada State, Martha Berry, on Fulton Road. And we've been looking at the farm, Inc. Farm, along with Mark's lot, that's the Batza or development, or the OSID. We have a couple issues to discuss with the board, we've done some schematic master plans of what could be done, but obviously, we have an issue in the poor soils toward the rear. We found very good soils for a common septic system, which within, after your regulations were adopted, state D E P had been working on combined systems for condominiums, shared systems for individual housing, and went through MEECO with environmental impact statement, and then developed a set of regulations and requirements so that with conventional subdivisions and condominium type subdivisions, shared systems. Obviously, the issue that we have comes with trying to get a density that works for a master plan on this, on the property. So we're going to talk about the existing conditions. We have a couple of conventional subdivisions, but they are allowed by right with shared systems under the new title five, which will answer the question from previous, we'll do this in your code where it is. The OSID. The OSI with the shared system, which is also allowed under Title V. We have excerpts from that section, which is Section 290. And then an open discussion with the board. We're here to get your input and whether or not we can come to an agreement on some exceptions or waivers to have a density that works. Otherwise, we'll look at, we'll have to look at other alternatives for the executor and his family to mark the property. Regarding the other directions. So the total lot area with Mark's lot combined is just over 40 acres. Total frontage is 315 feet. We've marked the levens and the buffers. We've done soil tests, but we also have the soil maps from the RCS, which are pretty accurate to the site. There is an existing farmhouse on the main farm, and it's an existing residence, of course, we're not. So this is the existing conditions plan. The farmhouse is right here. Mark's house is over here. There's a wetland area that comes down through, it goes onto the Raleigh property. There's another wetland out back here, so you can identify where you are to right at the intersection of Longbrook Road and Fulton Road. This is the south campus of Governor's Academy. That's where the cross-country tour is. Conventional systems have, we've had two sketches done. They both come up with pretty much the same criteria, which would be a potential for 23 lots. One of which would be an existing farmhouse, because we're going to specify that that be retained and maintained as a historical farmhouse. One being existing residence of Mark Woodbury, his wife. Two additional lots are designated on the plan for a shared system. They're not counted as lots, obviously. Road length, total site area, 37 and a half and new breed, three in relevance. So this is one of the concept plans. As you can see, this is an area here that tested out nicely, the area here that tested out as well. Some of these areas have high ledge. And because the farmhouse has its own system, Mark has his own system. And those, the blue area is the wetland area. And the buffer zones have been shown on the other planes that we have. Next. This is another concept, which had an in and out road, complete road. This has 26 lots, but we would be losing these three here to the shared system. So it ends up roughly being the same, 23 lot yield. Thanks. So we're looking at the potential for 26 units. One being existing farmhouse, one being existing residence, using a shared system. Road length drops down, and it'd be about 70% of total. And that's one concept plan. Shared system here, shared system here, which would be covering these houses. These houses would be going into that system. This is another concept, which had a loop road going in with a road going in, and you can see the shared system. So here's the state Title V criteria, 310 CMR, 15, 290. Shared systems are allowed for new construction that include the following. These are the bullet items you have to prepare in order to get approval of a shared system. Obviously, complete plans and specifications. You have to have an operation and maintenance plan. Prime, this is the primary one right here. You have to have financing within the lots. It's a monthly fee within the yearly budget, and also the developer has to put in and fund that to begin with. This is for maintenance and replacement. Not just maintenance, but replacement of the system when it happens. And obviously, there's a Title V covenant, covenant use that required. That's a book that's about that fact. But the primary thing that was brought up in the BEAP requirements of the Environment Loop Act report when this was going through was the financing. That's the key. That's the last. So just discussion points. Again, shared systems are allowed. And Chapter 2112 of your regulations requires, you know, the treatment options shall be determined by the planning board along with soil imperforation test. Chapter 117, which is your, I believe, your subdivision regulations, requires that each individual build a lot can be provided with an on-site disposal system, we've got to prove that. Our discussion is, is that we've shown that by using a shared system. So the key comes down to is what the board will require in order to consider yield. And what we're asking for is, is an agreement on the fact that we meet these criteria or discussion that we don't meet these criteria, in your view. Not every lot would pass the purpose.
You're talking about your yield plan, what?
The yield plan. For, for an open space development, we would be using the shared system, which more than adequately services that yield.
No, what I meant was, when you said, in fact, you make the point of the soil test across the site indicate limited areas. Are you confident that you could build according to your yield plan?
With a shared system, yes. With individual, on each individual lot, no. I'm just being brutally honest with you. This is, as you know, the soil by field, one step you go, you've got something that. Our work at Governor's Academy has shown that this is, it's some places you've got excellent material. Other places you've got what we in the business would call byfield problems.
And the DEP requirements, you know, the financing and all the things you spoke about, would those require DEP approval in advance? It's just local?
No, it's just local approval. A DEP set it up to go through the local approval, but we have to be all those steps.
Martha, is this something for the town engineer to take a look at?
Um, I, I actually sent him a question about this. And he consulted with DEP. He received a letter, which I believe I forwarded to the board, email. I've also been trying to talk with Deb Rogers, our health agent, about this to get her, um, her input on all of this. I haven't been able to have that discussion with her yet, so.
Well, remember, we met her.
We did.
With her.
We did, yeah, sometime back, but she and I haven't had a discussion about this since.
Gotcha.
So I, I, I would like to suggest that we get her input before the board renders any.
Have we got this material before? Did you have it?
Can't remember, it was sent yesterday.
The final revision was sent yesterday.
Yeah.
But nothing was sent out to the board by email?
Uh, no.
Oh, well, looks like another meeting time, but maybe we need to get Deb Rogers.
That would be fine, Martha.
To talk with you all, because I haven't seen it myself. I really can't much make any decisions.
Totally agree.
It would keep you awake at night. Well, if I may, um, I mean, this, this is not a public hearing, it's just an informal discussion, so whatever, I, I mean, I'll defer to anyone with greater experience here, but I don't think we could take any sort of a binding vote anyway, could we, under the circumstances?
No, you couldn't, I would just, I'm just asking.
Just looking for a sense of the board.
Each one has opinion.
So basically, you're gonna be looking for a waiver when you do submit?
That's correct. Obviously, we're talking about spending tens of thousands of dollars.
Sure.
We really want to have the board onboard, and if it's not, we'll, we'll look at other options. Mark, is this in 16? Is it? So if it isn't, it's.
That's fine, it's.
Yeah, well, I agree, I think, you know, we have to kind of take it under advisement and chat with our other.
Do you want to set another date?
Sure. Is that another day?
Well, yeah, good idea, but I don't know.
I don't know if we'd be ready in two weeks or not, but somebody.
Well, since it's not a public hearing, we don't need to set a time and date, sir. We could maybe tentatively say that we.
Yes.
Yeah, I can be in touch with Martha if she hasn't got her information back.
Because we already have a second filled up somewhat because of Charon Cross.
Right, so if we could do it on the 19th, because that public hearing is actually now gonna be rescheduled.
So what else do we have on the 19th?
I actually have a conflict on the 19th, I can. After the second, I'd rather not have it on the same day as the.
So. So it's second meeting generally?
So that would be January 16. So if you're comfortable with that, then we could tentatively put that on the agenda for 16. Actually, and that's over a month, so hopefully you can get.
Can you go down?
No, okay.
Yeah, it's one of the main.
All right, but so, what did we say? We don't have anything else going at that time, so what time should we choose?
We don't need to choose a time. Give it on the agenda, whatever.
Okay, let's give it other things. So do we need a motion?
Continue.
Nope.
Thank you. May I just throw it to all of it?
Thank you.
Okay, so the next. Now is the.
Later, sorry.
We need to look at the change check. We want to. Get a quill here. How much is the endorsement? Plan here. The address is 43. As, as the property exists presently, it has a frontage on Orchard Street. And along Great Hall Road, where the existing house sits. Services for the existing house. We're requesting a new lot to be created, called Lot 18A, with the frontage on Orchard Street in the appropriate area and contiguous apartments. We feel it's more or less pretty straightforward, and I'm requesting for its input.
So this here is the existing lot?
Correct, everything. 18A plus 18B. It's, uh, it's recorded at 275.91. That was done by point engineering years ago. So the quills will retain 18B with the property going down to Parker River. And the new lot would be this piece here. We shaded the areas with slopes that are greater than 35%, and I've shown the remaining levens also that were done by West, Black West for West of the White Metro.
And you, the odd shape is just so you can get your.
Just the area, yes.
And this is four residents up in here?
Yeah, they live right here.
Yes.
Is this size to be a built-in lot? I just don't think they're not familiar with.
Yes, it meets the requirements under the, we have some, the IRG, some, excuse me.
This is a site that was, that's just been cleared recently?
No.
No.
That's a continues, please?
That's the.
Yeah, that's the one right next to it.
That's probably an extraordinary lot, given the construction is still in the house. Martha, you want to say what?
Yeah, we've been, we've been through the review process.
Martha and I worked together on this. Maybe that might have happened.
I sent Jeff a bunch of comments, which, which he did address, I went through it. So it does have the required frontage, it's got exactly 145 feet of frontage and the area.
Want to vote?
Can I just ask one more question, not, um, as an educational question? Is creating at the point of an A and R and creating a new lot, are any of the sight line? We just heard about traffic concerns at this location, if I understand. I think Charon Cross is right across the street, is that right?
Yeah, I think so.
So I'm just curious, are any of those questions that were raised?
We're talking one residence versus what they propose.
Sure, sure. No, I just was curious about the width of the frontage, and there'll be a driveway, that kind of question.
The driveway can be anywhere along the frontage for the access. I don't know, without looking at further mapping, where they're proposing their entrance into that property and how that relates up and down Orchard Street to this.
Do we have to vote to endorse?
Yes, we also, do you have the check and the formas and all that good stuff?
The things are in here.
I guess I need a motion to endorse it.
No, okay, I'll move approval.
Okay, second?
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
We're gonna decide one, because we've got, just, we can figure the board. As far as the registry of days is concerned, our former chair, John Hall, still has signatory authority. I'm gonna be getting signatures from the board members tonight, which I will be sending off, but you might want to hold off on actually submitting the plan to be recorded for a few days until they actually get the signatures.
Oh, sure. We have to bring it back to Millennium to make copies of the signed plan. You're gonna sit there and, Eddie, it's New Jersey, you can.
Okay.
Let Mr. Tucker, if she wants to do it.
Maybe you all know the answer, but I would like, would you like to come and work with Charlie with the new approval?
Well, the board will be signing, and this plan will get recorded at the registry. So perhaps once you actually have it recorded, because it's not, not valid until then, you can give them the book, plan book and page to show that that's been done. And we'll also send you a copy of the Form A, which will be signed, so you'll have both of those documents that we can give to your mortgage company.
Thank you.
Thanks for your time.
Couple of your jobs.
There's only the My Life.
Oh, we have the place in the Form A deal as well, but if you do that afterwards, you can go to Jeff. Oh, okay, the forms in the Form A do as well, but if you do that afterwards, you can go to Jeff and he can take my life.
And I was here last month for your meeting.
And can you get it as well?
Yeah. Yes, we can. We got tricky planning.
Yeah, I think you get two covers together.
Get that to the keeper.
Yeah, get that to the keeper.
Keeper of the bed. And the covers of the keeper of the bed. Thank you very much.
Thank you. It's amazing to say, but we're writing legislation. Who's the holder of the pen at this point?
Okay, and we'll have good holidays.
You too, also.
Thank you very much. See you again at some point soon.
Do you want to...
Those, we have a select forum, so you can all go back tomorrow. Thank you.
Thank you.
Next.
Next.
Marshawn, what a gorgeous barn. I love it.
Well, it's actually going to be better than, um... What we hear about is the barn on Marshawn, the old barn. And proposal, I'm working with Anti-Barn Company. Proposal is to take the barn down. We have, let me go back. We already got approval to take the L off of the barn. We're gonna take the main barn, take it down. That's going to New Hampshire. And we're going to refit the pieces that are missing. So it had been modified from its original shape to make it cow barn, which is when a lot of things were added to it. Our proposal is to put it back the way it originally was, with the ties, the rafters and all that stuff.
Original material and...
Well, we're gonna have original material. We're gonna take some of the material out of the L if we can salvage that. The rest of the material is going to come from some barns that they have taken down. But some of the things that were taken out for since, the longitudinal ties between the uprights are all gone. We're gonna replace those. The original barn didn't have windows. So we're looking at, uh... We're looking at larger doors at both ends. We're gonna have a split door opening with a window over the top of it. The cupillos come back, okay? We have to rebuild them. And the, what we're gonna put on for roofing is gonna be steel instead of shingle. It's a lot lighter. And also, when we have it down, what we have to do is we have to work on drainage, we have to work on the foundation. We have to put some stuff in to hold the barn up. Right now, it's pretty much a mess. We probably will be building some foundation structures inside the barn so that we have something that the post is on. So that's, that's where we stand. What can I tell you? Finish is gonna be the same. It's western red cedar on the outside and then steel.
Okay, the doors, the sliding doors are gonna be...
Two sliding doors instead of six.
Yeah.
Instead of one.
They're two new right now. Cost base is nothing. Historic Commission already looked at it.
They looked at it. They're not part of the agreement.
Okay.
But we have, we had a... We had a scheduled meeting and then the meeting was canceled, so we couldn't come to this meeting. Happy to... But our, you know, I agreed to preserve the barn. We came before the Selectment and Planning Board a couple of years ago now.
Twenty sixteen, I think?
Yeah, and got the original, okay, to do the L and with this, we did it to it. And finally, it was hard to find somebody to work on this because that's not a common thing. People came and looked at it, I don't know, because basically a lot of, I don't know. And we finally found this guy up in Oxford, New Hampshire, and this is his work. He's done a hundred barns. And so that's, that's what he does. We found him, he looked at it, he said... He was actually a very interesting time to go through the barn. He could tell us what period, what wood came from, by the type of saw cuts that were in it. He looked, said, oh, well, this came out of here and this came this way. Though it was, it's been an education.
How old is he?
Part...
How old is he?
He's probably in his early sixties.
Okay.
So I curiously.
So I imagine that, from your earlier comments, the barn has kind of morphed over the years. Is there a particular period he's gonna aim at to recreate that?
For the original, what the original was, because what, what has happened is the original beams, the uprights and stuff, have all of the pockets for all of the members that were in there. The roof itself was shored up with a lot of modern timber that's gonna come out. We're gonna put regular large beams and then the curb ones in to make it as, as authentic as it would have been. And then we will use one-inch outside siding and then shingle.
What was the original roof?
No clue.
I bet it was metal.
I bet you. Uh, probably shingle.
Be my guess. So is this metal roof gonna look like a metal roof?
It's gonna look like a metal roof, unless you want it to look like something else. But if a metal roof on a barn is fairly typical, I suppose. I mean, right now, it's got, it's got asphalt shingle and that's one of the reasons that we have a bow in the roof is the weight of the shingle and then the stones.
Do you know when it was originally built?
Because of the saw patterns, we're looking at pre-eighteen sixty. That's as close as I can get. And, you know, and the thing is, a lot of these barns, I guess, according to this fellow, Don Palasti, a lot of these barns were made from, well, he had a barn that was coming down or somebody had a barn that burned and I can get some timbers from that. So a lot of this stuff came from different pieces. So some of the pieces are sawn. There are a few pieces that are hand hewn. So they came from an earlier barn that somebody took down and reused. We've got some pieces from the L that we will try and use. A couple of those are hand hewn. So that's, that's the story. And we're finding out more as we go through. You know, we explore in the foundation and say, okay, why is this, this like? Oh, well, there might have been something here. There's one spot where we have stairs coming down, you know, they go up to a floor that you can't get through. So it's all interesting stuff.
It is.
Well, I guess, given the language of the restriction, I guess I wonder how your plans reconcile with the Secretary's standards?
With the secret?
The interior.
Basically, that's the criteria for keeping a historic property. The U.S. Secretary of the Interior's standards of treatment of historic properties with guidelines for the treatment of cultural landscapes, but you're not worried about the landscape at the moment.
I can't answer that.
I did work for the parks, unless you know.
Yeah.
Well, maybe you could be helpful to each other.
Well, actually, no, what I would advise is, is that you seek a historical architect just to reveal your plans because it says here that this, we're supposed to be consistent with the Secretary's standards and I think we need something that says that we are, at least to be consistent with this restriction agreement.
Okay.
Any thoughts?
No, ultimately, it's the Selectment of the, the, have to...
Yeah, I believe that.
Make a decision on this, right? So basically, you're just looking for us to support, you know, is that...
That's, that's true, yes.
Although the restriction agreement names the planning board, right?
Well, it does. It does in the first paragraph, but, but the town of Newbury is actually the grantee. And with the Jespersons being the grantor and the Selectment will be the ones who sign the restriction on behalf of the town of Newbury. So...
So that's a little inconsistent. Sure, yeah, okay.
Apparently, in the past, it's been construed that the Selectmen have the authority when they, that they authorize the L to be removed, right?
After confering with the planning board, yes.
Oh, okay. So it comes back to us, maybe.
Well, it came to the planning board first and then went to the Selectment with a recommendation from the board.
And I think I'm counseled it on that too.
I should know. I don't think so. I don't think so.
No, the, actually, the members of the Board of Selectment came out, viewed it, had some comments to make. One of which was, at the time, David Mountman said, oh, if you wanna get rid of some of that wood, I'll take it. So, so the next step is to get an opinion from a...
I would get one from an architect that specializes in historic preservation.
Can we use the fellow who's doing the barn? Cause he's done a hundred barns, or is that a conflicting issue?
Yes, it would depend on his credentials. I don't know the answer to that. Is he an architect?
I, I don't know.
We don't know.
I don't know, but we need an architect.
Could it be a historic preservation?
It could be a historic preservation specialist as well. You know, someone who's, someone who's familiar though with the Secretary's standards.
Yeah, could he, yeah, I mean, could he write a letter or something to certify him that it's done and conform with those standards? I will ask.
Okay.
May I come back in two weeks?
Certainly.
Thank you.
Great, yeah.
We will put you on the agenda for the grantee.
Thank you, Bill. It shouldn't actually be figured out as well.
Oh, I'm sure it won't be. I haven't noticed that one.
Did they cram the use of the barn?
It was used as a barn. It had all disrepair, it's been, you know, it's been past and patched for a long time. And it's never had a full record of it. And so this is, we looked at it and said, let's do it, real job, give it a real life. It'll be a credit for a long time.
Are they gonna take it down and number the pieces and all that?
Yeah, yeah, they're cataloging the pieces, getting it ready to take down. If we could meet Sam, I know, we have an approval on the L, so if we get to work on that, that would be great.
On that part of it?
Yeah.
Yeah.
Yeah, cause he's got a cease and desist, so he stopped everything.
So he's got a cease and desist on the entire, on the entire thing?
I believe it's the entire thing, but, you know, let's talk.
Okay.
Tomorrow or something.
Yeah, he, he may be in tomorrow afternoon, otherwise he'll be in on Monday, I think, from between eight and twelve.
Okay.
I used to work at E B five years ago.
Oh, did you?
Years and years ago.
Sure.
Any comments on this?
Uh, just, we're all in favor of the restoration of the barn. We wanna make sure that the grantee is, is, is happy with the changes in, in maintaining the historical integrity of the exterior. That's what we're interested in. We know that changes have to be made and preservation of the barn is, is our priority too. Uh, I would like to see when the transfer of the grantee was done, cause I can't seem to find this out. The grantee is the planning board.
That was back in two thousand and eighty-nine.
I'd love, I'd love to see it somewhere.
Yeah, um, yeah, I mean, this was signed in, in twenty thirteen. It was done, kind of, you remember when we did the rewrite of the OSRD?
Uh, okay, okay.
The revision of the OSRD and this is signed.
Cause the original was, was back in eight or nine, where we did some division. And then I guess we reworked.
Well, this one's dated in fourteen.
Right, it was signed by the Selectmen in fourteen.
Right.
And so at some, at some point, I honestly can't tell you, the grantee was changed from the planning board to Town Hall. And they go to Town Hall and the Selectmen were like...
You can have the copy of this?
Well, I've, I've, I've got copies.
Part of it's confusing because in the beginning paragraph, it says, "The planning board having its usual office at town offices, which at the time was twenty-five High Road, and Lord help us all, will soon be again, here and after referred to as grantee." But then when you get to the last page of the agreement, it says the grantee is, is Newbury Town Hall. The implication being that it is the town.
Right, which is why the Selectmen signed it.
Yeah, so it's got like two parts. They're the same one. And that's what twenty thirteen, that was, that Elena signed. This, the restriction agreement was twenty fourteen.
So the Historical Commission cannot sign a demolition permit until we understand that the grantee is satisfied with the plans of the barn's restoration. Because we can't, that's a conflicting document. We didn't commission to tear the building down, but you, you have a document right here that says we, you cannot tear that building down. So until whoever the grantee is, the Selectmen or the planning board approve the plan, I can't sign the permit to tear it down or dismantle it, as the Bible says. Dismantle is one of the words in the Bible. And in order to dismantle the barn, he has to have the demolition permit.
This is where the conflict of the meeting came from, in which I explained that we did, we were trying to comply with the letter of the law, which said they and the BOS has to say yes before we get everything that says demo to start with. So that's why this was like the conflict. We did not know this agreement was in place because it's not stated anywhere in the paperwork that we got. So then it was like, uh-oh, we're gonna like step on toes and do the wrong thing. So that's why.
Against the weather, if you wanna, I don't, I, if you wanna take other demolition permits, specifically specifying the L and the L only, our board will, will entertain it. If you wanna do that to start with, so you guys can work in. But that is also, it has to be, you have to have a meeting to vote and the building inspector also has to be in agreement on that.
I thought the L had already been removed, no?
No.
Oh.
No.
So...
Yeah, the BOS twice said they could remove the L. Judith and yes.
What is your timeline? Someone mentioned weather, when you're hoping to get this started. If you approve today, would you start this anyway?
Yeah, well, we already have started. We've emptied out the barn, we've taken a lot of stuff out, moved a lot of dumpsters, so we're, we're ready to move on that right now. So if we get an approval to take the L down, we will get that down while we research the rest and get, get a barn restorer to certify that what we're doing is a restoration. rest and get a barn restorer to certify that what we're doing is a restoration.
You might want to check with Bethany at Spenceby as well. She probably knows everything there is to know about who's available to do what historically. So she knows.
I will. Back to me, so.
I get it.
And that's not good. It sounds like the safe thing to do is just get everybody to approve it.
Exactly.
That's bad standing.
Sometimes it's consistent.
I get all the emails, and I can give you an email address or telephone number. That'll save you extra steps. Because this is ours, well, historic one now, but to me, they'll still use them. But she knows, they know everybody everywhere, and knows all this stuff, so they're great. That should go in for a week.
It should be an interesting thought.
Isn't it? It's new, right? And it's Newbury and Vinefield, all the same.
Absolutely.
We move on to the... Oh, we already did the planning.
Thank you. We'll see what happens.
We know, we know we'll meet next Thursday, so if you can, um, get, do you have anything?
How much do you want to talk about?
Not much.
Give me the request.
Well, I'm still waiting for the bylaws.
Yeah, demolition permit.
We haven't gotten any answers. About that. Emily, did you pull out the document I lost from Dyke and Deerfield, which Lisa had recommended that we take a look at? She wasn't able to find the mained one, so those are just included in the packets. So whoever's interested in working on the cell, if you want to take a look.
We've been to one of these before.
Maybe we can get together at some point.
I can be a voice.
That'd be great. And then the other thing, it's actually in the last page of the packets. I got a couple of things from Sam today. Three of them are proposed general bylaw amendments. One is rather than doing a noise ordinance or noise bylaw, he's actually suggesting that we add just a paragraph on construction work hours to, it's actually in chapter 82, as shown here. It's the first item on his thing, between 7:00 and 8:00 p.m. on weekdays and Saturdays, and between 9:00 a.m. and 4:00 p.m. on Sundays, pre-Christmas and Thanksgiving and Christmas. Because once he started looking at the noise bylaws, it gets into a lot of, a lot of things, you know, DB above ambient, things like that, which, very complex. So this is really the biggest complaint that he gets, construction noise. So he thought this might be a way to deal with it.
He gets tired of hearing from me, right?
Construction noise, does that include pre-setup, bringing trucks in, for example, or getting work for the day lined up, and then start work? And the start work is the beginning of the title of work, when they come in early to do the setup?
No, that's a good question. I could ask him how he was, what he says is noise associated with a valid, only one of these permitted to be told 7:00 a.m. and 8:00 p.m., so I would think...
It's a little sketchy.
Yeah.
He only doesn't say. So I think the question is, people come in, contractors come in, get their trucks ready, get your equipment ready, get your people ready, get tasks assigned, and then say, "At 8 o'clock, whatever it is, start they go to it."
Seems like that would make noise.
It does make noise. Noise, I don't know whether it's construction noise, or Sam would have to redefine that.
Yeah.
So maybe...
Construction noise or anything related to it.
Right, right.
Like pulling, you know, a tractor off a skid or a big piece of wood, it's noisy.
I think it's something more like construction, construction-related activity is prohibited between those three hours. So I'll talk to him about that. The second one, he suggests...
I'm sorry, my question is, I'm just curious about Thanksgiving and Christmas being called out.
He called that out specifically because he did get some calls on Thanksgiving about work that was being done, a complaint. So that was kind of his rationale for the two major holidays.
Well, I would, yeah, it seems unusual that you include a religious holiday, I guess, and not another religious holiday. Just curious about calling them out.
Maybe just holidays. You know what I mean? Now that would...
I think that would open the door.
Yeah, that would go into a lot.
Juanzo, if you're right.
Right.
Well, no, I meant, I meant state holidays.
State, federal and state legal holidays.
Federal and state holidays. And then you're not calling out the religious aspect of Christmas, which I think is your point, which is, which is, you know.
That's a valid point.
Yes, it is.
I think, I mean, someone might say July 4th wouldn't be a good day to make a lot, you know, I think it's sort of, you open the door to holidays, or you sort of close it. I don't know. I think the other way to go would be not calling them out, but in a legal bylaw.
Well, any bylaw...
He probably, I'm sure he hears...
Yeah, any bylaw change is going to have to be approved by the interim general anyway.
Right, right, right. And there's some holidays, like Veterans Day, which is kind of a semi-holiday, it's a legal holiday, but it's not always observed, same with Martin Luther King Day. So I don't know, but I'll pass that back to him and see what he says.
I mean, I want to think about labor contracts and stuff like that, but yeah.
Yeah, you know, I'm coming back to your thought, maybe the best means to say nothing. Sometimes less is more, you know what I mean?
Might be easier in that way.
But see, you know, it's would be us to say.
Okay, and I would also, this would have to go before town council, before even before town meeting or anything, so she might be able to advise on that as well.
Roosters.
Second one is a suggestion, he's had several complaints about roosters, so this would be a suggestion to add to chapter 56, dogs and other animals are prohibited against roosters except on registered farms.
That's a tough one.
That shall otherwise be considered nuisance animal.
Are you saying I can't have fresh eggs on my property?
You can have hens.
You can have chickens.
I have a way.
You don't...
I'm not going to get any more chickens over roosters.
If you just want eggs, you can have eggs.
What's a registered farm?
Or you can come have cockatiel.
Yeah, it's such a thing to register.
I don't know. I'm kind of a rooster.
Yeah, that strikes me as problematic, because you can't restrict farming and anything over, it is five acres.
Five acres.
Yeah.
So maybe it would actually be better to say something, you know, a farm that qualifies as a farm under 48, section 3.
That would probably be more legally precise.
It isn't going to help me anyway.
She's still a farm.
No, but she'll decide she's grandfathered, so no.
Do you have roosters?
Next door.
You don't need to lock them, quite then.
Not at 3:00 in the morning.
The third one was a chapter, amendment to chapter 60, section 60 dash 1D, and this has to do with earthwork. There's an exception right now in that bylaw, basically exempting any residential construction from, from the requirements of that, and there have been a few instances where substantial amounts of earth are being removed from sites where residential construction is being done. So his thought was to at least trigger something if it's over 20,000 cubic yards, as, you know, as a number that he thought might be reasonable. So again, it's a general bylaw, it's not a zoning bylaw, but he just wanted to put all of these before the board. Don't know if you guys have any thoughts on that or not.
Not yet. What's the timeline for submitting bylaw amendments to town meeting?
I was hoping to get that to you tonight, and I didn't. For zoning bylaws, it's a very prescribed process, because it needs to be referred to the selectmen, referred back to the planning board for public hearing. The board has to hold a public hearing within a certain timeframe. For the general bylaws, I think it's, it doesn't have to go through that process. So, yes.
Would it make sense to just hold a workshop, just devoted completely to bylaw amendments?
Probably.
Rather than try to work them into a regular meetings?
Yeah, yeah, I think so.
Sounds like a good idea.
Then we just focus on that.
Yeah.
Wouldn't necessarily have to take a couple of comment, I think you call it a workshop. Not that it wouldn't be open to the public.
Yeah, it would have to be posted, but right, right. And it would be separate from the public hearing at the board, but ultimately, but I think, because it is hard, everyone always come to at the end of the meeting, everybody's, it's a little hard to focus on it.
Let me ask you about the soil removal, we already had prohibition against that on, is it just on...
It's on, it's on non-residential.
Non-residential.
Right. Residential is exempted essentially, so Sam is trying to at least...
So would this apply just to someone who's building a house?
Could, if they were doing...
Like new construction, or if somebody is like doing an addition or...
I mean, I don't know, you know, for example, the work that's being done at 34 Newman Road right now, there's been a substantial amount of earth removed coming into Old Town Hill. I don't know if it amounts to 20,000 cubic yards or not, but, you know, what's actually happening with that earth, and what are the ramifications of that work? So it's...
Did that person not get any type of permit to do what they're doing?
I don't know.
Well, apparently, soil removal is not required. Whatever other permits they may have had, there's no requirement for soil removal permit. Besides that, I had to imagine what 20,000 cubic yards looks like.
I know, Sam and I were actually kind of trying to figure that.
I had, I think it could be the size of this room, or four times the size of this room, I have no idea.
Right, right, right. And if you think of one as three by three by three, and multiply that, but it is, it's hard to kind of wrap your head around that. You know, because he said for, it's a big number, yeah, and he said for a foundation, it might be like a thousand cubic yards or something like that, so this would be...
Yeah, I mean, you don't want it so restrictive that people can't build their houses in a timely fashion, you know?
Right, right, which is why I think the original exemption was in there for the residential construction.
Right.
But if you see something that's significantly above and beyond that, then it would be good if there was some mechanism to kind of control that. I think it's his thinking.
Just kind of interestingly, I drove by the Quinn, was that Marshmallow? No, Grayland, what's that?
Yeah, Quill.
Yeah, sorry, Quill. And there is a house being built back in there.
Which is different.
Like sort of down towards the river.
Right.
The mountain of soil that is, was visible from that road, I, it was astonishing. So I'm curious if you, maybe if you talked to Sam, like, that might be, if we're out there on a site visit, just to eyeball, is that 20,000 square feet?
Oh, yeah, for reference.
Just to give a reference point, it would really sort of, a mountain. I've just never seen that in a development project. I mean, it's...
Interesting, it was a hill beside that was cleared, so that was already existing. Nothing was brought in there.
That's probably all the stuff, the top side.
Just for clearing for the house, yeah. Yeah, that's all I have, so.
That's 171 Orchard Street. I'll ask him if he's got a sense of that. And then the other, the final one actually would be a zoning amendment to Article 10, general regulations in the zoning. The reason this has come up actually is because of that parcel, 171 Orchard Street. There's currently, we currently allow temporary trailers for construction on a site. There's an existing house on that site, which the developer would like to use as his construction office, but we actually don't allow that under our zoning. So Sam would like to include an amendment that would allow for temporary use of an existing house while a second, while a house is being built on the property, and then it would have to be demolished before...
You mean temporary use?
Temporary use, during construction.
For commercial purpose?
As a construction trailer, basically. And then it would be demolished before an occupancy. Permit would be, unfortunately, this didn't, his amendments are in red, and that didn't show up in what I provided to you. So you don't need to make any decisions about that to me, but this is something he would like to propose.
Is it common enough?
It's come up a few times, I think.
Occurs, yeah.
If you guys have any thoughts on that, or if we should move on to...
Has somebody's cattle functioning?
Yes.
Do they, can they sleep over there?
Good question.
Yeah. Could that be authorized or prohibited? I would suppose that since it's a gable existing house, people can sleep over, but they may not rent it in the meantime. If you use the downstairs as a construction trailer, essentially, can you rent the upstairs rooms if there are any perils?
Good question.
Here being be. I mean, the aims seem straightforward enough, I think it's just a matter of, you know, tweaking the language so that they're, you know, limit any potential abuse.
Right. Okay, we'll pass all of these back to Sam and see if he can refine his thoughts. Yeah, sure.
Do we read Jim's letter?
I guess, or just say what we've gotten.
We've received a letter from Tim Robinson, a resignation from the board, effective December 1. And I will miss him.
Yeah, he's been, yeah, he's been a good, a good member.
And I guess we need to move on to the election of new officers.
Since he was elected vice chair, but...
The last one. Musical chairs situation. So I was going to suggest that Mr. Pecos be vice chair. Anybody has any comments on that?
Do you have any comments up here? Be a pleasure.
Somebody wants to make a comment.
Oh, so move. Second. Yes, okay.
Okay, any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. And then, in the tradition of the planning board...
The two guys.
Could we have a motion to make Larry?
No one's told me what it involves, though. Have a free coffee, donuts, or what? I can read those. So who? Second. Second.
Okay, any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Now we need to get the conservation commission.
Jim was the planning board member on the conservation commission, that is a requirement under our bylaw, that one of the CONCON members be a planning board member, so the board needs to choose a new...
I have a motion. I'd like to suggest that Rachel would maybe, or...
That is a requirement under our bylaw, that one of the CONCON members be a planning board member. So the board needs to choose a new.
I have a motion. I'd like to suggest that Rachel would be our, our representative, conservation commission. Second. You're shaking your head up and down, so I think that's a yes.
So if that made you attend every meeting?
So is that?
They tell me yes, I'll be divorced by the end.
So you'd be a voting member on the CONCON?
Yes.
Apparently, yeah, I know, I didn't realize that actually until Jimmy resigned.
So it's not just only.
Yeah, for their chapter, chapter seven, section two. One of the, first thing it says is that one of the members shall be a planning board member and then the other members shall be terminated. So it's a voting decision.
So do any CONSCOM members want to serve on the planning board?
I don't really.
Right, because that, there's still a seat, correct?
That has not been suggested.
I think Rachel would be great if you're willing, I know.
Well, give it a try, see what happens. Have to brush up on my wetland laws.
Yes, you will. So we, so we've got a motion and a second we need to vote.
All in favor?
Aye. It was moved in second.
Yes, it was.
And now we go to the signatory authority.
Right, because last time Jim was the second authority to sign. So that needs to be revised to allow for an alternate member in the event of absence or incapacity of the above named member, who is Rachel. Just some payroll invoices and that and stuff, so.
I think, does it make sense just for the vice chair to do that?
Okay.
Union.
So I guess probably we should have a vote on that.
Okay, can I have a motion?
Will Peter serve as the alternate signatory on documents, just payroll or anything else?
Well, this was specifically for the finance office, but we also do need to vote again on who will sign A and R plans. So it's under, you know, under our general law, we can have one person sign. And what I'd like to suggest, it was John Weiss, but I'd like to suggest that it be either Rachel or be, if you're willing, his vice chair.
You mean either or?
Either or, yeah.
Because Rachel signed the A and R.
She signed the A and R, right, right. But, you know, if she's gone for a month, we don't want to hold up an A and R for, you know, a whole month and risk constructive approval or something like that, so. So we've really got two votes. One is the signatory for invoices, we've got a motion from George on that.
I'll, I'll second that, if you need, you need a second.
We do.
Okay.
Okay, any discussion? All in?
Aye.
So then it's signatory for A and Rs.
To designate Peter as the alternate signatory for A and R plans.
Second.
And Rachel is primary.
Yeah, am I already primary?
We haven't actually, I don't think we voted on that, so maybe we should do a vote result.
I have a question, is that just for A and R plans or would it be for subdivision approval as well?
You know, this is something that you all are going to have to sign tonight. It's, the registry requires signatures of all the board members and the way they have it here, it's for approval not required plans only. Authorized agents signing for approval not required. So what we've been doing is having only one signatory on the A and R plans, but this will board on any other decisions that are. So we've got a motion from George. Well, actually, it should be probably reworded to have Rachel or the, or Peter as the office.
Okay, I would draw my prior motion. I move that Rachel and Peter be authorized as alternate signatories, just as signatories.
For approval not required plans.
Approval not required plans.
One or the other.
Yes.
Doesn't require both.
Second that motion.
All in favor?
Aye.
Great, did we get all homework done here?
I think so, so then I have two things for you all to decide. One is the finance thing for the payroll and invoices and the other is the signatures that need to go to the registry of deeds. I'll fill in the stuff about when you all were appointed and when your appointments expired, so don't worry about that right now. And so we don't have to say I'll sign twice up here and tell you and say to Rachel. Do you want to do it? I'll take care of the rest of it. Is it ready to go on now?
Yes.
Rachel, Paul, you just need to sign this one.
Everybody need to sign that one? Everybody need to sign that?
Yes.
See if I can do this neatly, I'm not used to.
But I still don't have to go to conservation commission until I get appointed by the board of selectmen, right?
That's right, so that would be next week.
I still have it for a moment.
Not yet, because Tuesday, we'll do it on Tuesday, we need to go on eighteen.
I think it's just different on each one, I'm sorry.
Have to start putting that on my calendar. Well, I won't remember.
They're the third Tuesday of the month.
Tuesday?
Yeah.
Let's take a back to Rachel.
Yeah, do you need all the rest of the signatures?
Except for Kristin's, because she's not a full board member on that one. Thank you very much.
You're welcome.
Have you been to the select?
I have been to the select.
And how are they?
Selectmen.
Good.
Probably the biggest thing there is there, there are some changes with respect to the building committee and the building project. So the selectmen did take, on the Tuesday before Thanksgiving, I wasn't here, but they did take a vote to go back to the January twenty seventeen vote to do a stand alone police station and some addition renovation to town hall as funds allow. And the building committee has been dissolved. There was a motion to appoint a three member committee and appointments were not made last Tuesday, but I expect that they will be made this coming Tuesday.
Maybe I misunderstood, I thought the, the six and a half million wasn't enough to do the police station. They can do it for that.
I think it depends on who you talk to.
Okay.
But that was, yeah, so let's see. There, there will be some language regarding the charge to the committee that I expect will probably be read on Tuesday as well. I'm not quite sure about how that will be worded. And I've gotten letters of interest from several people, so.
That's good. We don't have, is that, is that the board of selectmen?
Yeah, that was, you know, business license, licenses and stuff like that, but that would be the most, most significant.
All right, well, Jim isn't here, so we're not going to hear from the CONCON overall. Is there any board of appeal?
No report.
No report.
MBBC, I went to the planners, quarterly planners meeting today. And they talked about a number of things they've done. They've, they have a website, Merrimack Valley Means Business, which they're now reconfiguring into a new website called Merr-. We are, we are Merrimack Valley. So they kind of launched that today and you might want to take a look at it through their website. It was kind of, it's very different from what they had before, but you can also, you can do property searches for available commercial properties and things like that. But they're also focusing on, you know, small business and that kind of stuff. And there are, there's a page for each community with some statistics on it. So if you have, want to take a look at it, and that also some bullet points about the community, if you want to take a look at it. And if you have any suggestions for the library page that you want to pass back to me, and I'll send them on. Let's see. The Essex County Community Foundation, I think, is getting very actively involved in sort of cultural planning now. There's going to be a cultural planning workshop in January for a new report in the surrounding area. I'm trying to think what else. They're, they're proposing to do a new pictometry flyover in the spring of twenty twenty. So Gerard talked to us about that today. And I also did mention to him that we have some new board members and would he be willing to do a pictometry training? And so he will get back to me on that. You know, I'm happy to show you whatever, I know it's much more limited than what they do. And it could be actually an online training that, that would happen, but, you know, anybody who wants to just sit down with me and go through my map or pictometry, I'm happy to do that at any time.
Just really briefly, what does that happen at, aside from diving? So what do you, what do you use it for?
Pictometry or my map or both?
I guess both.
Okay, so, so my map is actually, that's linked to our assessor's data and it's based on our, our assessor's map. So you can go in and you can call up a parcel, see it on the map, you can turn on certain layers to see what, say, where the floodplain is, where the wetlands are.
Okay.
Other things like that.
Sixty-one eight.
Yeah.
Assessor's data, and then there's a link, and you can look at both the base map and aerial views, but the aerial views are just straight down shots.
Yeah.
There's a link to pictometry, which gives you three D views as well as straight down. And you can also go back timeline to whenever they've done flyovers. So if there's a particular parcel that you're interested in, you want to see what it looks like today and what it looked like in twenty, you know, two thousand and seven, you can, you can do that comparison and really see, you know, if there are encroachments or new things that you think shouldn't be there. And you can also, for both of them, you can take measurements and they're both tremendous tools and I use them multiple times every day. The assessors use them, use my map to create certified abutters lists. Police and fire can use them if they're actually, if they've got, you know, an active fire or crime scene or something like that. They can look at it to see what the best angle and approach might be. DBW can use it. So it's really both very powerful tools for, for our planning purposes.
Does that include coastal hazard zones?
It includes a flood zone.
Flood zone.
Yeah, so it shows the V-zone, you know, the AE zone and things like that, based on the twenty fourteen FEMA maps. As well as terrain, even building footprints or not building footprints and all kinds of stuff, so, great tool.
So instead of Google Earth and GIS Oliver, it's all one load in one better place.
Yeah, and the GI, you know, if you want to look at priority habitat, the best place still is to, you know, look at it through Oliver, because you, you know, you can kind of go right into that. But, and they also, they, they show differences between the twenty twelve FEMA maps and the twenty fourteen FEMA maps. Not so relevant anymore since we've been twenty fourteen for a while, but, so it's cool stuff.
Yeah, well, I'd be interested in a little training at that, I'd say.
Happy anytime, and they do have YouTube tutorials on their website as well. Just need to make sure that you choose the ones for my map two point zero.
Anything else?
That's probably enough for now.
Yeah, probably isn't enough for now. Although going to all of these OSRDs and we're going to end up with open space. It might be a good idea for us to, we probably can't do it now, but to start thinking about having a baseline data report. So that we have a document with photos of what the place looked like when the restrictions were put in place. And it makes monitoring them easier later on, which is typically what most of the larger conservation nonprofits do.
So you're thinking when, when the special permit is issued or the subdivision is done, so we have what?
Right, it should be part of the application, you know, you know, after the final subdivision plan.
Before and after.
So that at least you know what was there at the time, you know, twenty years from now when they say, oh, no, that's always been there.
Right.
Has there been any practice or policy around who owns the open space and starting, like what the board or the town recommends to develop it?
It varies, I think the towns, when we first set it up, the towns preference really was that it would be a nonprofit like Greenbelt, who would, you know, either own it and fee or at least hold the restriction. We've had it dealt with several different ways. We've had several where, where it's actually the homeowners association or condo association that, that owns the open space and the conservation restriction, the conservation commission holds the restriction. I think it was Livingston Lane, Essex County Greenbelt holds the restriction. So it, it, it varies.
I think it's the planning board's option, wasn't it?
We've kind of left it, it, it's kind of a developer's option, but the planning board tries to guide it.
So would the CONSCOM need to be consulted and agree at some point? Like with the planning, were we looking at a CONSCOM if it were of interest coming to the town?
Potentially.
Restriction?
Yeah, I mean, the CONCON does get involved. I mean, if there's, you know, if there's a conservation restriction on, on the open space, which there always is, then it has to be signed off by the CONSCOM as well as the board of selectmen.
But if the town, if the town held it, held the restriction, it would probably be the CONCON that would oversee it, right?
Yes, yeah, they, yeah, yeah.
I mean, if the town holds it, chances are it's the board of selectmen that are the grantees, because they are the ones that are authorized to accept property.
Right, but the practice has been that both the CONCON and the, so I've been signed off on it, but the CONCON oversees it. And this is one thing I haven't done, but it would probably be useful to do, is to go back through all the OSRDs and make a list of, you know, who, who holds it.
How do you know that?
OSRDs, let's see, we've got Colby Village, Caldwell Farm, Wilshire Road, Livingston Lane, Marshmello.
Do they tend to run about the same number of units as these that are being proposed here?
Caldwell, well, Caldwell Farm's the biggest, because, you know, sixty-six, it's got, you know, they're all.
Wow, the sixty-six in there?
Company and units.
Acres or?
Units, units, and I can't remember how many buildings, I think generally they're four units per, per structure.
How big is the open space?
I can't, I shouldn't know, but I can't play rough enough how many acres it is. And while we're on that, we did send, we did, Lisa Mead's office did send a letter in November, on November seventh, to the Caldwell Farm Board regarding the trail they have until the fifteenth of this month to get back to us. And if they don't, then I think we, we said we won't move forward.
What's the problem with it?
There was, as part of the special permit and subdivision approval for the Caldwell Farm project, it included a trail easement and a primitive walking trail that was supposed to be put in there. The developer, Alan Berry, kind of blazed a trail in there, but it was never really finalized. So a number of years ago, we, there have been several efforts to move forward with a trail there. At one point, the thought was to try to connect it from, between Triton and the Governor's Academy, and there was a huge pushback from the Caldwell.
Okay.
The decision would be filed in some form at the registry of deeds, which would encompass the land.
Right, the conservation restriction is filed, the trail easement is filed, the special permit is filed and the definitive plan, so.
So you really need to look at those documents to determine who has the right and, and the obligation, you know?
Okay.
Will you put your hand?
I need, yes, I need a second. Did you say, who said?
And I said, hold on.